Question, by when is the SAT math gauntlet coming? So about gauntlets. So there's an ACT math gauntlet. Let me give a little context here. There's an ACT math gauntlet. I'm gonna put it up here. And so it's basically a packet of questions that are geared for geared to helping you understand what topics need to review or not review on ACT math. And so a lot of practice questions, there's an answer key. If you want video solutions and instruction on all the topics, you can check out my ACT math bootcamp course. So this is the ACT math gauntlet, and I do intend on doing an SAT math gauntlet, but probably not soon, certainly not before the May test. So to put this in text, let me actually switch back to this. So to put it back, to put it into text, oh, I messed it up. So SAT math gauntlet, not before the May test, unfortunately. I'm working on a number of other things right now, one of which is gonna be actually on the homepage of the site. I'm gonna have a listing of what I'm working on, so you can see what is coming that's new and what I've just finished, among other things. So not before the May test. The question, real question is before the June test. That is probably also gonna be difficult because the major projects that I'm working on next are crash courses for the SAT and ACT. So if you have a week into the test, or if you just want a quick summary of the SAT or the ACT, that's what these crash courses are gonna be about. So certainly sometime in the summer, I think, is a pretty good bet. But I've got other so many other things going on first that probably not before that. The, if you want like practice math problems, for now at least, that's part of my math course. I have, basically what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna take the problems that I use in my math course and put them into a packet, kinda similar to what I did with the ACT math bootcamp. So if you're a member of my site, if you get access to the math course, those questions would be a place to start, for now at least. How long are the crash courses going to be? So don't know yet, but the intention behind the crash courses when they're done, and I'm hoping to have them done, or at least the SAT one done before the June test, that would be the goal. And if I'm really productive, get them both done before the June test, both the SAT and the ACT crash course. So the whole point of the crash courses is they're gonna be basically the fastest way to prep possible. That's my goal. My goal is to, the number one thing when I'm working with students is students just don't have enough time, don't have enough time to do the prep that they need to do. So my goal was to make a resource that kind of condenses the most important things you need to know for both the SAT and the ACT into the smallest package of courses and videos and exercises possible. So it's still in planning phases. I don't know exactly how long it's going to be, but the goal is to keep it as concise as possible, because I think that will be most helpful. Now, you're gonna sacrifice a little bit of the comprehensiveness, of course. We're not gonna be able to cover every single topic, because it's gonna be a crash course, it's gonna be condensed. So my full courses will be in place if you've got a longer term schedule. But the goal of the crash courses is to make something more concise. So I'm hoping like, keeping it in single digits in terms of hours of video is probably your realistic goal. College admissions essays, I do look at college admissions essays, but I can't do that for everybody, and I can't do it for free, because it requires a lot of time. I gotta read the essay, gotta think about it, write comments, write commentary. So I can't do it for free, but I do have a service which you might be able to use if you're interested to get your essays read and get comments on college admissions essays, among other things. So I'm gonna put this up on the screen as well. Put this up here. So it's actually one of the things I'm working on now. I'm coming up with this extra help program. Basically, you can, instead of going through a longer term tutoring process where we would be meeting weekly, or twice a week, or whatever it might be, it'd be more intensive course, I'm offering a way for you just to purchase time that you can use to meet about whatever, on whatever schedule you're on, on demand. So if, for example, you wanted help with essays, you could book some time with me. We can just talk about essays, and there'd be no commitment beyond that session. So it's just a convenient and easy way to schedule time on your schedule, on demand for you, and to go over SAT, ACT problems, whatever it might be, but it would be a one-on-one tutoring type deal. And because it's more of an informal session, because it's not gonna require us to go through, you know, it doesn't require me to do a lot of planning, because we're just meeting to discuss, the, my rate for extra help is a lot lower than it is for tutoring. So if you're interested in that, just go to my website, look up extra help, and you can find more information on that. But I do look at college admissions essays, it's just not something I do free. So this is probably the most asked, one of the most asked questions about reading. It's when you're stuck between two choices, stuck between two choices, particularly two, sometimes three, but almost always it's two. What do you do when you're stuck between two choices? Now, a lot of what I could say depends on the question, depends on the passage, but there's one piece of advice I can give you that can really help for when you're stuck between two. And I talk about this a lot in my videos. I think I even have a video or two on this on YouTube, if you wanna check it out. I believe it's even called "What to Do When You're Stuck Between Two Choices", something like that. But when you're stuck between two choices in the reading, what you need to do is check every word. Each word counts. So what do I mean by this? Sometimes, let's say, let's come up with a scenario, let me get my tablet out here. So let's say, get my wires organized here. So let's say you're doing a reading section, and let's say you've got four choices, A, B, C, D. And let's say you've eliminated B and C because they are ridiculous, but you're stuck between two, and they seem really similar. They seem both like they could be correct. What do you do? Well, what you need to do is check every word of those choices, because usually, like, let's say this one is like blah, 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 and this one says blah, 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 blah. Usually what it comes down to, especially on these hard questions, is there's perhaps even one word in one of the choices that doesn't fit the passage, literally one word. So what you could see, for example, is when you're checking the choices, it may be, let's say, this word right here in choice D that doesn't actually fit. Maybe it's too extreme, maybe it's not mentioned in the passage, maybe it's too much of an inference. So it could be one word in one of the choices that would help you boom eliminate D and pick A. So what you need to do is really drill into that choice and say, does every word work here? Particularly these words that are wrong often come towards the end of the choice, because what they want you to do is read the beginning part. The beginning part will look good, and you'll say, okay, this looks good, I'll pick it, without kind of really giving the full attention to the whole choice, and maybe seeing that that last word doesn't work. So without a more specific example, this is about as specific as I can get, but this is really what it comes down to. What makes a reading question hard, when it comes down to picking the final choice, is you're gonna get two choices that are very similar, and why they seem similar, or why they both seem correct, is because most of the choices are correct. So this whole choice would be correct, all of this would be correct. It's just that one little thing that's wrong, and that's what makes the whole choice wrong. So this is a trap choice that I call in my courses, half right, all wrong, which I stole from Princeton Review, but the idea is basically that even one piece of a choice, if it's wrong, makes the whole thing wrong, and then you have to go with the other one. Can I, oh, no, go back to this one. So what should you do to improve your understanding of complex passages on the SAT? So I'm guessing in particular what you mean by this, obviously depends on the passage, but often the one that gives students the most trouble is the history passage. There's always gonna be one passage that is more historically based, so you know, something from the 1800s or something like that. And so again, it's hard without really going through a passage together, but a lot of what it comes down to, for the history passage in particular, is really leaning hard on the questions to find out actually what do you need to understand and what do you not need to understand? Because for a lot of that passage, there's gonna be stuff in the passage that they're not gonna ask questions about, even if it's a general question, you don't necessarily need to understand it. So spending time trying to comprehend a part of the passage that they're gonna ask no questions about is a waste of time, and it's a waste of energy. So it's gonna be really leaning hard on the questions as a guide for you to understand, okay, what do I actually need to pay attention to? What is actually gonna be important or not? And I talk a lot about this in my YouTube videos. I have a video on this. I think it's about, the video is how not to zone out, or how to ace boring passages, something like that. I've got a number of videos on this. So check the reading, SAT reading playlist on my channel, and you'll see more information about this. I also work through like an actual history passage line by line, so you can see how we can analyze it. Part of it's practice, but a lot of it is just really leaning on the questions. What's gonna be important, what's not? Another question, more strategies to eliminate incorrect choices? This was an emailed question. I assume you also mean in reading, and you already mentioned the trap videos. So yeah, I've got videos on trap answers, both on YouTube and in my courses. So you've already watched it, the question asker, but other people, if you've not seen my videos on trap answers, that would be a place to start. Again, it's hard to really talk generally, because in the end, what it's gonna come down to is what does the passage say? Which choice matches what the passage says? That's it. A lot of people overcomplicate reading way too much. I don't know where exactly that comes from. I mean, I have some speculation. So for example, a lot of the stuff you might do in English class may seem somewhat opaque in terms of themes and symbols and figurative language, and sometimes it can seem a little wishy-washy, and a lot of times we bring that mindset to SAT passages, but that's not the case at all. The answer is in the passage. If you're having problems answering a question or eliminating choices, the problem probably is you haven't found where in the passage the evidence is. That's what it comes down to. So that's what I can say generally without looking at more specific examples. Which services? So I guess the question was about what I offer for my extra help services. So again, that's where you can meet with me for 15 minutes, 30 minutes, 60 minutes, whatever it is, very informal, it's not a long-term tutoring relationship, and therefore the rates are a little bit lower. So what kind of things could we talk about? We can go over SAT and ACT problems that you wanna discuss, that you're having trouble with, we can talk about that. We can go through strategies that are more specific to your situation, whether it's reading, math. We can go through other school stuff, you maybe help with homework, help studying for a test. I do math and I do chemistry. We can talk about your essays for school, your projects. We can talk about college admissions, we can talk about college essays, really anything that you might work with me in tutoring, we can do it in a more informal way in these extra help sessions. So if you go to Reason Prep and you look up extra help, you'll find it. Well, you'll find it soon. It's still being linked together, but it'll be there. If you check my, if you check YouTube, I made a video on it recently. How do I beat the really opaque historical passages and speeches with kind of weird jargon? Unfortunately, there's no shortcut. This is, this is the issue with history passages, to return back to history. There is no shortcut, like there's no one thing I can tell you that suddenly you'll be able to read something from the 18th century, just doesn't happen. What it comes down to is, as I said before, really leaning on the questions, practicing reading this stuff more, that's about it, unfortunately. What it might come down to, if you're having a lot of trouble with it, especially for those of you out there who are non-native speakers, I mean, I'll put it this way, native speakers of English have problems with this, because when you're looking at language, English from 18th century, as you're saying, the kind of weird word usage that we're not used to, even native speakers don't even know what's happening half the time. So you can imagine if you're an English as a second language person, then this would be even harder. And unfortunately, there is no like, oh, here, if you know this, suddenly you understand it, doesn't exist. So really, what you're gonna perhaps have to do, if you're really struggling with history, is triage it, really make sure you can maximize your score on the other four passages of the reading section, and then do your best with the history according to the things that I've already mentioned already. But in the end, it comes down to specific passages, so it's hard to be more specific than that. What would you suggest I do if I wanna get a perfect score on the critical reading section in the May test, if I get, currently get about two mistakes per passage? All right, this is the really tough question. So let me put this on the screen. So it's about like, improving to the next level, basically. So this person basically gets about two wrong per passage, and here's the thing, even the best SAT critical reading student or tutor is not always gonna get everything right every single time. So even like me, for example, you know, most of the time I take the reading section, I'm doing it like barely paying attention, I do it pretty quickly, usually will get them right, but sometimes I'll make a mistake. Even if I, even if I'm actually, you know, in the testing environment trying, I'm not immune to making mistakes. So the first lesson is, what we have to think about in terms of scores and perfection, getting to that top level, is that there's actually a range of possibilities for you. Everyone actually doesn't have, like, let's say right now you're at 760, let's just say for reading, writing. On any given day, you're not gonna score a 760. Some days by luck, you might score a 730, or other days you might get luckier than that and get a 790. And that's why they actually report your scores a range. So the fact that you're getting two wrong, it's probably not consistent. Maybe sometimes you get two wrong, maybe sometimes four wrong, sometimes three, sometimes one, sometimes none. So the goal is gonna be, what can we do to move that band of wrong questions closer to perfection? What can we do to maximize our chances of getting a 1600 or getting an 800 reading in this case? There's a few things, again, you know, it depends on your specific situation, depends on this question types, but here's some general points. One is, check all answers thoroughly, especially circled questions. So what do I mean by this? Obviously, you wanna have time to check your answers. So if you are finishing the test in like 63 minutes, and you've got only two minutes left to check, and you're getting two wrong, one of the things to work on is to become more efficient, so that you could finish the test in, let's say, 55 minutes and have 10 minutes to check your answers. That's the first step. You're gonna need extra time to review your work. So if you don't have that extra time, you're gonna wanna work on becoming more efficient, so that you've got that extra time. Once you begin to check your answers, you wanna focus on questions that you've circled. And so this is where the skill of test-taking comes in a little bit. So when I'm working through a test section, and there's a question that as I'm doing it, I'm like, ooh, this one seems a little tricky, like I'm stuck between two and I'm trying to balance the choices. What you wanna do is circle that number, even if you come up with an answer, circle that number, so that when you come back at the end, after you've finished everything else, you've got a set of questions that knew, that you know were tricky. And now you can go back and review the question, come at it with a fresh eye, see if you noticed something you didn't the first time, give it more time to think about it. And you wanna really identify those questions, because most likely, if you're gonna get one wrong, it's gonna be one of those, right? A lot of times when we get questions wrong, we're not really surprised we get it wrong. It's kind of like, oh, yeah, I had problems with this one. So you wanna be able to identify those in the test, so that you can come back later after you've finished it, and you've got time left to check those first. And then, once you've done that, you've checked all your circles, then you go back and check whatever else you can. But it's about identifying what are my tricky questions? Which are the ones that gave me trouble? Let me get an answer if I can, but then come back later to review. That's really important. Knowing what your danger questions are, so that you can put, give them more time once you've finished everything else. Let's see, what else could we say here? You know, a lot of it gets into strategy in terms of trap answers, for example. Know very clearly which answers are typically trap choices, and I go through a lot of this in my reading course, things like half-right, all-wrong, which I talked about previously, extreme answer choices, true but wrong. So for example, if a choice is true in real life or from your knowledge, doesn't mean it's right, it's gotta fit the passage. Watch out for questions that use specific words from the passage, sometimes that can be a sign that it's wrong, not always, but sometimes. So knowing the trap answers can help you avoid some of the more obvious or sometimes sneaky mistakes. So that would be another thing. Is there anything, I mean, there's a lot more in terms of strategy. I would say, let's leave it at this for now, because it really comes down to, as well, I guess, kind of identifying weaknesses would be the last thing. Which question types, if any, are you consistently getting wrong? Are there ways to improve on those question types? Are there passages that are giving you trouble? Are there ways to improve on those passages? That's what I would say in terms of more perfect scores. Anyways, other than just repetition of the questions that I can do to keep from burning out during the ACT, I usually crash during the reading. Yeah, so there's, I talk about this a lot in videos, I think on YouTube, I've talked about this before. And a lot of times, when we're talking about time management, we focus a lot on, we focus a lot on, I'm running out of time, I need more time to finish the section, that kind of thing, very standard. But we often give less attention to the fact that these tests are really long, they're really draining mentally, and what can I do to deal with that? Like, once I master time and I don't have issues running out of time, what do I do with the fact that this test is really, really long and tiring? And a lot of advice that could be given here, the one thing I would say, besides, of course, practice, I mean, you know that, right? Practice, do practice tests, full tests, do it in a maritime conditions. When you're practicing, try to keep the distractions away, because you gotta build that focus muscle. I would say, again, this is just maybe more, I don't know, me being, turning into a cranky old person, but I don't envy you all for having to grow up and learn in school in the technology, social media, internet environment that you do. So I went to school in the late 90s, early 2000s, that was, that's when I was in high school, and you know, we had AOL, but none of this stuff existed, right? There was some internet, it was like barely a thing. So it was very easy to kind of focus and get, not easy, but easier in some ways to focus, I think. But now, I find it with myself, with all the tech and gadgets and devices and social media, it's really hard to get that focus muscle strengthened. So you have to, in your practice, really, you know, put away the phones, put away the social media, turn off the TV, turn off music, and really learn how to focus, because it's something you can get better at if you put in the time. So beyond all that obvious advice, the one thing I would say that also gets less attention is efficiency. And what do I mean by this? So a lot of times we focus on the questions that we get wrong, obviously. If I got a question wrong in reading, I wanna make sure that I don't get it wrong in the future, or that I learn, if I get a question wrong in math, that I learn the math concept. But we also wanna pay attention to what you're getting right, because you can get a question right, but you could do it in an inefficient way. You can use up a lot of time, you can use up a lot of mental energy. So the way you increase your efficiency, one of the ways to do that is to get better at the stuff you're already good at. Because, put it this way, like, let's say there's a math problem that you get right, but you get it right after about a minute and a half of like, thinking, there's all these calculations, duh, 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 you gotta pull out the calculator, duh, 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 do all this work, and then you get the answer. You get it right, but it took you a minute and a half, and more importantly, it took you a lot of brain power. Versus eventually you learn, oh, I can do the same question with this shortcut, do it in 15 seconds, and I save time and I save energy. So sure, you're still getting the same question right, it's not a difference in the score, but it makes a big difference longer term. So when you're reviewing your work, your practice sections, your tests, you also wanna focus on the questions you get right and say, are there ways I can do this better, faster, easier, more efficiently? And that can help with burnout, in addition to practicing and all that good stuff. Okay, how do I avoid making one or two silly mistakes on the SAT math section? This is actually really similar to what we just talked about for reading. So the first question was about what to do when I get too wrong in reading, and we had some points to make there. This one's about math. So a lot of things we talked about with reading apply here in terms of checking your answers, circling questions that give you trouble, being more efficient, all that good stuff. You know, it really comes down to specific questions for math in particular, in terms of avoiding mistakes. Other things that I would add though, just as a general tip, would be, if you have the time, try different methods. So if I'm working on a tough problem, and I wanna make sure I did my answer right, if I know of another way to try the problem, I'll try it that way. And if I get the same answer doing it two different ways, I mean, 99.9% of the time I've done it right. Another thing to do would be plug in your answer. So once you get an answer, test it. This is obvious when you solve for x, plug it into the equation, see if it works. But it can work in other cases. So plug in your answer as, into the problem and see if it's consistent. And if it is, again, 99.9% of the time you probably did it right. Another thing would be to, I had it in my head and now it's gone, oh, what's reasonable and what's not, or estimation. This really helps a lot on percent questions. So for example, if you're trying to get the percent of a number, and you end up with a number that's bigger than the original, that doesn't make sense, because a percent, if it's like 15%, should be smaller, should get you a number that's smaller than the original. So knowing what answers should be reasonable, estimating around what the answer should be based on the numbers in the problem, if you get something wildly different from what you expect, that's perhaps a sign that you made a mistake. So that would be three things I would say. Again, the same thing applies with the reading, where there's always natural variance, luck will come into play, some days you'll get four wrong, some days you'll get three wrong, some days you'll get none wrong, sometimes you'll get one wrong, and then two wrong. And so there's a lot of variance, just based on luck and the difficulty of the test and things like that. So all you can do is get good habits to try to shift what's normal for you, the normal range shifted closer and closer to perfection. Do you recommend using a calculator on SAT math? This may seem like a strange question, but there's actually something interesting about it. It may seem like, yes, obviously you wanna use a calculator. And yeah, I mean, you do wanna use a calculator, but there's an interesting point here. Do you recommend using a calculator on the SAT math section? I didn't carry a calculator in my first test and got a 760, nice. It seems almost all the questions can be solved without a calculator. Yes. So as you know, one of the sections, you're not allowed to use a calculator, another one you are. My whole stance on this is, the lack of a calculator is more psychological than anything else. As this question says, certainly in section three, all of the questions can be answered without a calculator. Even in section four, nothing strictly requires a calculator. You might have to do some ugly calculations by hand without it, but you don't need it. Now, of course, yeah, use the calculator in section four, no problem. However, two points are, not having the calculator in section three isn't actually as much of an issue as you might think it is, it's more of a psychological thing. And having a calculator in section four is not really gonna save you, because the calculator is more of a nice little thing to have. So I think the key here is, yes, use the calculator, but as the question's saying, it's actually maybe not as important as we might think it is. Relying on it is not gonna be the solution to doing well in the math section. I already solved every single critical reading passage published by the College Board and Khan Academy. I still get mistakes, where can I get more practice? So this is where it gets really tricky, and I actually made a video specifically on this. So let me pull up that video. Okay, so what was the title of it? Actually, we'll just do this. So it's one of my somewhat recent-ish Just Pick C videos. And it was about what happens when you run out of tests. Just let me mute that. So here. So if you go to YouTube, you'll, and just Google, or go to YouTube and go to my channel, or just type in ran out of tests, more practice for the SAT. I talk about what to do when you've run out of tests, that's a really good image to stop on. That's not much better. That's not much better. I kinda look like an idiot, so let's just scroll down, but you get the idea. This is the video that basically covers exactly this topic, what to do when you run out of tests. And if I just maybe seek ahead a little bit to where I talk about this. For reading, it's a lot trickier, but long story short, you're gonna use old SAT passages, which you should be able to find a lot of. So, because they're somewhat similar and they're pretty good substitute, I don't recommend third-party books like Princeton Review or Barron's or anything like that for SAT reading. I barely recommend Khan Academy even for SAT reading, because it's really hard to get right, to get the questions and the passages right. So I would say old SAT questions. But like I said, if you go to YouTube, type in ran out of tests, Reason Prep, you'll find this video, there's also a link on my website about this, so that should answer the question. Okay, we've got a question about subject tests, specifically SAT chemistry. And this applies to any subject test, because there's a little bit of a holdover from the old SAT days. So what should the guessing strategy be for the SAT chemistry subject test has a difference from the actual SAT? So this applies to any subject test that you're taking. So what I'm gonna say applies to Math II, Math I, Physics, Bio, History, Literature, anything. Because on the subject tests, if you get a, so if you get a question right, you get plus one, which is what you would expect. If you omit the question, so if you leave it blank, you get no credit, which is what you expect. But if you get it wrong, not only do you get no credit for it, they actually take away a quarter of a point. And this is how it used to be on the old SAT. Of course, this is not true for the full SAT, right? This is on the regular SAT, you can guess, no problems. On the ACT, you can guess, no problems. It's just on the subject tests where this is true. And because this is true, people freak out about it, because they don't wanna like lose that quarter point. But here's the thing, here's ultimately the rule of thumb for any time you've got this guessing penalty. If you can eliminate two or more choices, guess. If you can eliminate two or more choices, guess. That is the strategy. It's really as simple as that. If you can get rid of at least two choices, so if you can get down to on the SAT subject tests, three choices or two choices to pick from, guess, and that's it. If you can only eliminate one choice or you can't eliminate any, then you omit. And that's it. Nothing more complicated than that. Uh, don't overthink it, be aggressive in your guessing because if you can eliminate two or three choices, you want to guess. So do it. And then if you can't, you can only eliminate one or none, leave it blank. And this only applies to the SAT subject test, just to reiterate, this is not for the real SAT. The real SAT, there is no guessing penalty, fire away. Is it easy to move from 1220 to 1500 in six months? How much time should I invest every day? So I wouldn't say it's easy because if it were, then everyone would get 1500s and then it wouldn't be much of an achievement. So it's not easy, but is it doable? Generally speaking, yeah. Six months is enough time to make a big jump. Again, like I was saying to the last person, a lot of it depends on what you've done already. A lot of it depends on the classes you've taken, things like that. But in principle it is possible. In terms of how much time to invest every day, so I go through this a lot in my study plan course, which is available for free on Reason Prep. So go ahead and check out my study plan course. And what I recommend there, since you're starting six months ahead, is that on average, 30 minutes per day, four to five days per week, over six months would be really solid. Now, of course, sometimes you might go a little bit longer than 30 minutes. Like if you're doing a practice section, you check the answers, whatever it might be. Other times you might do a full practice tests and I recommend full practice tests once every, given six months, like one every three weeks would probably be fine, or maybe even once every month, uh, given that you're really starting far out. But, so sometimes you might go longer than that, but on average you should try to be consistent. That's the most important thing. It doesn't really so much matter how much you do each day, just as long as you do something each day, even if it's 20 minutes of prep. That is much more important than what most students do, which is do nothing through the week and then maybe cram on a Sunday or cram on a Saturday and a Sunday. You're not going to get as much results out of that compared to splitting that up and just doing a little bit each day. So that's the most important thing. I was wondering how or what to drill to become better on the reading section. So there is a few levels to this. And a lot of it depends on how much time you have left until the test. So let me split this into long-term and short-term. Long-term meaning like six, six months plus. Short-term meaning like less than six months. So for long-term, obviously the first thing to do is read every day. And this would be, I have a reading list. So if you want to get some suggestions for the kinds of things you read, just go to reason prep, look up reading list. You'll find where that reading list is, goes through the magazines, newspapers, websites, books, things that you can read to help you improve your reading. But just like with prepping, if you read every day, even if it's for 15 minutes a day, on average, that will make a big difference long-term because you're going to gain the skills that you'll need to read. The people who do well on the reading section typically are people who have done a lot of reading on their own through their life. It's a lot harder to get a higher score if you haven't had that baseline of reading. So if you don't, or you don't do it as much as you like, start now, get started, read every day. Like I said, check out my reading list on Reason Prep. Other thing would be to do some vocab work. Now this isn't perhaps as useful as it was on the old SAT. And even there, I don't think it was as useful. There, again, if you check my website, reasonprep.com, look up a vocab, the vocab list, that's available for free. I've got some of the most common words that appear on the SAT. So check that out. And so learn some vocab again, over the long-term, that can make a big difference. So read every day, read stuff you like, read stuff that challenges you, but that also interests you as best you can. And learn some vocab, keep working on that consistently and you'll turn into, like if you do this for six months and you're consistent, six months plus, you can turn into a real powerhouse. And like, once you're, like, here's the thing, once you're a good reader, all this stuff about strategy and this and that and tips and tricks, it's just, it's just extra. Because if you're a really strong, powerful reader, you'll just cut through the passages like they're butter. And, and the only way you can do that is by building up the strength and these habits. Now, over the short-term, let's say you've got less than six months or you know, you just don't have much time, whatever it might be, what can you do? Obviously these are the, the best solutions because that turns into a powerful reader. But the most important thing to do is of course, practice passages on the SAT slash ACT, whatever, whatever you're doing. Uh, really the best way to get better at SAT reading is to do SAT reading. The best way to get better at ACT reading is to do ACT reading. So I would definitely do practice passages timed especially, timed sections, timed tests. That's the, the bread and butter. Uh, then you'll want to do a full review of the questions. Every single question, every single choice, really drill in and see why is this question? What is this question asking? Why is the answer right? Why are the other choices wrong? And then as an extra bonus, what you should do is a close reading of the passage. So after you've done the test, after you've done the questions, you've checked your answers, you reviewed the questions, then go back to the passage and reread it and try to understand what's going on with it. And this is kind of coupled with the reading that you'll be doing longer term, where you want to start understanding how these texts work outside of just answering questions. So it's all based on the short-term. It's all going to be based on reading specific stuff for the SAT, reading and practicing SAT or ACT passages, whatever it is you're working on. Okay, hello, I'm a junior and I recently got my SAT score for March 11th, 1320, 690 math, 630 reading. Want to get into the upper 1400, so that would be like a 150 point increase. What should be the game plan? When do you believe I should take the test? Okay. So the first thing is in terms of a study plan. Again, like I said before, I've got a study plan course that goes into some detail about how to set up a study plan, best practices, how long to study, how often to study, things like that. So that would be number one, check that out. Uh, in terms of your specific situation, obviously the focus is going to be on the reading and writing. Now this 630, it's hard to know whether, like what the breakdown is there, reading, writing. Most likely you still have some points to gain in the writing, so I would really lean heavily on the writing section. Most students should be able to get that to a 35 plus, if not higher, because it's a very repetitive section. It tests the same things again and again. It's pretty simple, timing isn't too bad. So that should be able to gain you maybe, I don't know, I don't know what the breakdown is, but another, I don't know, three, 30, 40, 50 points right there, something like that. So really lean on the writing section. Uh, for the math, what you're going to want to focus on, given where you're at, is hard questions. So these are the questions towards the end of the tests for both the multiple choice and the grid ins. Those are probably where you're losing points. So when you're practicing, focus on hards especially. Uh, and then any topic that gives you trouble, which again, you're going to have to learn as you practice and work through this stuff. And then it comes down to reading and you know, hopefully you can gain, I don't know, 30, 30, 40 points in writing, 30, 40 points in math, that will take you to like, uh, 1400. And then it's going to be about what to do with the reading, which I'm guessing is probably that the lowest score of these set. Maybe it isn't, but probably is. Uh, and then a lot of it comes down to what we were just talking about, uh, literally in the last question. So that would be the game plan. In terms of when you should take the test, uh, you know, it depends on your particular situation. If you're doing APs or whatever else you're doing, subject tests. Next one probably for you would be June, maybe my guess. And then either the August test because they've released in the, at least in the United States. I don't know if it's international. In the United States, there's an August test that you can take. Uh, if you're not in the United States, or if you want to take one not in August, then the October would be your, your main test then. So that would probably be the game plan for you at this point. All right, how are we doing on time? Okay, we're almost set. Uh, try to run through these last ones quickly. I've been scoring, uh, like 35 plus or minus three on the reading and writing sections. Can I raise it to near perfect in a couple of weeks? Maybe it's possible. Again, it's hard to say, sure, it's possible, but without knowing which questions you're getting wrong, why you're getting them wrong, it's hard to say for sure. But certainly my answer to that question doesn't preclude you from trying either way. I mean, that's why I like, so this is one of the most common things I get, like such and such, such and such, is it possible? Like, can this happen? Can this occur? Like my answer is almost irrelevant. Like I'll probably say, yeah, it's possible, but in the end, either way, you got to put in the time. Like even if I said, no, you can't do that, it won't work. Um, you're still going to probably try to prep anyway to get some improvement. So like, my answer is not really helpful either way. So I would say, yes, it's possible, but you're going to have to put in the work either way. So put in the work. That's probably all I can say about it. That would be anything somewhat helpful. Okay, so we are out of time. Uh, we're going to wrap it up for today. I'm going to have another live stream session, uh, probably sometime next week, maybe Tuesday, maybe later. I have to look at my schedule, but it'll be posted on YouTube. So you'll get the time, it'll be in my Facebook group, you'll get an email about it. If you're part of my emailing list about the live stream. So this recording will be up on YouTube. We'll have a live stream later in the week, all that good stuff. So keep sending your questions and I look forward to seeing you all next time. So thanks for coming and I'll talk to you all later.